And I'm calling us to order and I'm turning it over to our distinguished council president.
Thank you, Jeffrey. I think everybody on the council knows that my suggestion was that we spend this evening's work session talking about how we might approach the revisions to our building code and with the idea that we'll have a continuation of this discussion mid-month because probably we can't get through everything tonight. I did want to spend just a few minutes going back to our last meeting where we had quite a bit of a conversation about a proposed committee. And after the meeting, I thought I really need to know more about how other communities approached doing major reviews. And so I asked Steve if he could send me some of the material he had looked at and based some of his work on. So Steve did that and I spent some time reviewing the town of Chevy Chase, Chevy Chase View, and Martin's Editions work. And I talked to the former town manager at Martin's Edition and the current town managers in the town of Chevy Chase and in Chevy Chase View who were around when they were doing their reviews, just to get a little bit more of an idea of how they did it. And I put together a little bit of a summary. I wasn't really finished, but I kind of wanted to let people know what I was thinking about and sent it around. And then I also asked Steve if he would send material to all of the council members so they could look at things in their original form rather than my little summary. And in the material that Steve sent around was this great nugget, which was the memo that our town attorney Ron Boldt had written on March 4th with, number one, his observations about what communities had done and his observations about what were some of the things that were important to have a successful review. And I had not seen that memo before. I think it only went to Jeffrey and to Steve and to our town manager. And I felt like it was really an important document. So I thought tonight, a good way to start our discussion would be to have Ron do a bit of a summary of his observations about how other communities have tackled difficult issues and what happened in that process. And then some additional thoughts he has about our building code relative to other communities and some potential threats he sees to Somerset's based on what's going on in the county. So with that introduction, if I could just turn this over to our attorney, Ron Boldt.
Sure. Thank you. So I didn't have any remarks prepared, but I'm happy to go over what was in my memo. And just by way of background, it may be helpful to point out that for many, many years, municipalities in the area, in the regional district, that is, Down County, Montgomery, and Prince George County, only had setback authority. But then as communities began dealing with mansionization, in 2006, the state legislature expanded the authority pursuant to the request of the town of Chevy Chase and others to then enable them to regulate things in addition to setbacks, including building elements that relate to a structure's mass and bulk, lot coverage, impervious surface coverage, and the like. And then after that authority was granted in 2006, the town of Chevy Chase was the first in the area to go through a comprehensive code review and code amendment to exercise that new authority and to address the concerns that were perceived resulting from mansionization. And basically, that's, you know, the tear down of existing structures and the construction of much larger homes with contemporary building practices. And that was deemed an issue by the town of Chevy Chase and some others because the county building regulations were seen as sort of a one-size-fits-all framework and were based on zoning and building regulation assessments from the 50s, basically. So with the mansionization authority granted in 2006, a local government could exercise much greater control over what houses are constructed, how big they are, and to make sure that they're consistent with the character of the neighborhood and won't, for example, present further issues with respect to stormwater drainage and the like. I think everybody knows that as the county concedes, the county's stormwater drainage system is antiquated. It was not constructed with contemporary building practices in mind. And as there are less and less green spaces in communities for rainwater to naturally infiltrate, it's created a real problem in some communities. And so, you know, the town of Chevy Chase, for example, in addition to adopting building regulations, also adopted a stormwater drainage ordinance, which was, you know, actually implemented before the county's current framework. So, you know, how do these towns approach it? You know, I should also mention, after the town of Chevy Chase did so, then Chevy Chase Village, and then Martin's Editions, and Chevy Chase View, Section 3 and 5, Garrett Park, you know, all the neighboring towns have taken a look at their code and reviewed it where necessary, some more than others. You know, the town of Chevy Chase does have a very comprehensive regulatory framework. And towns on the other end of the spectrum have very few regulations, you know, maybe just a setback. And that's basically where the town of Somerset is right now. We have building setbacks, but not some of the more comprehensive regulations that town of Chevy Chase, Chevy Chase Village, Martin's Editions have, which, for example, in addition to setbacks, will also regulate wall plane length, as one example. You know, the length of a wall can't be so long without an offset of at least three by five feet in order to break up the visual mass of the structure. And there are many more of those regulations. I won't get into them all. How do these towns approach the review? Basically, two approaches seem to be applied most often, or maybe I should say three. The first is the council does the review itself and then drafts regulations, or a citizen committee is created and the committee does the review. Or thirdly, you know, maybe just one or two architects or builders in the town or town staff provide recommendations and the review is triggered that way. With respect to any of those three options, a sub-option is whether you retain paid expertise. The town of Chevy Chase, Chevy Chase Village, Martin's Editions, Chevy Chase View, used an urban planner, Chris Jakubiak, out of Annapolis, who then subcontracted with an architectural firm to help study the character and then based on that study, provide recommendations as to what building regulations may help preserve the existing character. That's an option. You know, I think that where the town of Somerset is, you know, the town council's not yet discussed whether regulations are necessary. You first want to have a study group prepared, I'm sorry, created, as I understand, to study the issue and present facts to the council. And then based on that study, you'd then determine where to go from there. You know, I will say that in those other towns, this has been an issue that is potentially divisive. Some folks don't want to see any new regulation because they're afraid it may impact their property value because they may want to, for example, be able to sell their property and the buyer knowing that there's no restrictions on how big a house can be. On the other hand, you know, some folks that feel that regulations are necessary to preserve the character and to address contemporary issues like stormwater management and even the loss of urban forest. So I'm happy to answer any other questions. Let me see if I'm leaving out anything. Among the materials I presented with the memo, I showed you the final work products for the town of Chevy Chase, Martin's Editions, and Chevy Chase View, where, you know, the urban planner actually prepared a written report and some diagrams from Martin's Editions, showing what the character study of the town revealed, what regulations were recommended or ultimately adopted. And also, I had prepared a table just comparing all the different regulations among my clients and a couple others in the area to show who's doing what in terms of regulations, setback, lot coverage, floor area ratio, and the like. That is an old table. I think I last worked on that five or so years ago. So if you had an interest in that, that could be updated. So that's it in a nutshell. And in overview, happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have an initial question, and this is just a procedural question. In that why the memo was sent to Steve and why it was not shared back in March at the request of the mayor, Steve was working on something. And then why wasn't the council given the memo until June?
So I responded to email from Steve and as a practical matter, I don't copy the entire council because doing so would potentially inadvertently violate the Open Meetings Act if we had a quorum then on that email chain. But all of my advice is for the entire council. So, you know, I anticipated that it would be shared eventually. I regret the delay.
I guess I have another procedural question that the request for this should, in my mind, and maybe Jeffrey can answer this, I think should be coming from the council. And actually, it seems to be being driven by our mayor. I see this as a policy issue and one that the council should be deciding. And it seems that Steve has been put in sort of an awkward position because the council never really asked for this and wasn't kept current on research that was being done by our town lawyer. And I wonder if there are other projects like this that are, as I see, council decisions that are actually being requested by the mayor.
So I'm not sure if I'm on mute. I think I'm clear.
I'll let's hear you.
Thank you. So my great question, my recollection of the events or the chronology is that the town council recognized that there were some significant issues or concerns related to new construction, building permits, the McMansionization that Ron is referring to. And it was leading to some fairly contentious council meetings. The mayor recognized this. And in November of last year, with the full open discussion with the council, the mayor asked that Franny and I work together as like a little working group to assess the situation. And Franny and I did for several months. At some point in the, I don't know, February of 2020 timeframe, Franny, not to put words in her mouth, but she elected not to continue to support this effort. So, and I was trying to move the effort from new regulations to a study group. And that's why I was having these discussions with Ron Boldt, which I shared, at least in context, with the entire town and town journal articles. So I don't, I'm surprised that there's any surprise about what was happening.
One of the things that struck me, if I could just jump in, about Ron's memo was how important he thought it seemed to be that the council set goals as a group. And, you know, I think maybe what happened here is we all have talked about things. I think how you've presented, how things unfolded last fall with an attempt to do some work between you and Franny and move the building permit process, building code process forward and how it didn't quite gel, that's all very accurate. But I think maybe the step that I feel like didn't quite occur is for us to just sit down and talk about what is it as a council we want to focus on. And that's kind of what I see as what we can be doing together tonight and for the rest of the month with the idea that we can, we'll reach some agreement about what we want to focus on, what's important to invest our time and energy into, and how we will go about doing that.
If I could just also respond briefly, I mean, I think Steve is correct that he and I started out talking generally and then when he had a specific proposal in mind for bay windows and porch coverage, that was something I was not on board with at the time for moving that forward. And that was sort of where that effort stalled. But it wasn't to me, in my mind, sort of me not supporting things more generally. But instead, what happened was that I feel like the council's attention was shifted pretty rapidly into conversations about the proposed tree policy as well as responding to the concerns raised by the group of residents, as well as trying to understand the goals of the proposed committee that the mayor proposed forming. And it seemed, at least from my point of view, that all of those things were taking a lot of priority, at least a lot of oxygen, and also were fairly confusing in terms of whether or not we'd sort of agreed that we wanted it and, you know, whether that was the mayor's prerogative to go ahead and form a committee. And so we've had, I feel like, as you said, there have been contentious conversations and meetings. And I think that that just supports the idea that we need to back up and work together as a group on what our overall goals are.
I agree with Franny. And I might add, I think one of the most useful pieces of material that was in the packet was Ron's out-of-date chart that Somerset's not even listed on. And I would ask the council to possibly approve Ron updating that chart, making it current, and including the town of Somerset.
I guess I'd also just like to point out that I did not receive the March legal advice until this packet. So even though we were tasked to work on it together. But anyway, it's neither here nor there at this point. We all have it now.
Yes, I hope everybody has all the material. We circulated some things. I asked Matt to circulate other things. Steve sent some things out. So there should have been quite a bit of material for people to go through if they have the time. I mean, certainly just even going through, for example, the town of Chevy Chase's report is an investment of time. It's 60 pages long.
Again, that's why I would like the chart to simplify things. I think it's easier for people to read, an updated chart by Ron.
Yeah, I'm new to the council and I thought I'd get my voice in here.
Can I just ask if people want to ask Ron to do that? If the council wants to ask Ron to update this chart?
I think that would be useful. I think that would be useful.
Yes, I agree.
And Robin? Yeah? Okay. All right. Sorry, Robin, for interrupting. So Ron, if you could put that on your list to do it, is that something that would take a lot of time? Because we would like to get together mid-month and it would be nice to have this by mid-month so that we are a little bit better prepared to talk about things.
Yes, that's possible. It won't be difficult to update. And just might be helpful to point out as well that we've referred to this email from me as my memo. But in case there's any confusion, it didn't require any research. I discussed all clients of mine and the processes that I went through with them. So I did not have to research anything new with respect to that.
Robin, I'm sorry I interrupted.
Right, yes. What I was trying to say was, I hear concerns over mansionization mentioned by Ron, and obviously, that's been felt by other towns around us. And I'm sure some people in this town also feel concerns over mansionization. I've no doubt about that. I've heard them myself. But I think we've got to ask as a council, what problems does mansionization, what problems does mansionization bring on our town? What does it do to our town when large homes appear? And does that negatively affect our residents when those large homes appear? I mean, they may all be architecturally very sensitive and be shocked by the architecture of the mansions, but I don't think that's it at all. And the question is, do we know well enough to know if our residents are being negatively impacted by these large mansions? And just so that should be the basis of our study and advance. Everybody can't mute?
I think the only, I don't know if it's my turn or not, but the, my only reaction to that would just be that I would encourage that to be a data-based analysis as opposed to, you know, some kind of anecdotal survey. Because I think, you know, everybody in the group has probably experienced home construction near them and had to make adjustments and put up with a lot of discomfort. And so there may be different points in time where people feel negatively affected by any kind of construction, whether it's mansionization or not. But I guess I would be interested in finding out specifically what that means in terms of an effect. Are we talking about increase in property values? Are we talking about, you know, improved landscaping? Are we talking about a loss of tree canopy? What are we talking about and how can we quantify it, just so that we can understand it as something measurable?
Well, certainly. And I mean, the town of Chevy Chase did, in fact, collect information on the cost to residents of fixing stormwater problems and use that as part of their analysis. And so we could probably do something similar there. And that would clearly be data-driven. Some of it, though, it's hard to really build data clearly around the loss of tree canopy. It's, you can argue it in principle as a problem, but to quantify it for the health and safety and pleasure of residents, that is tougher.
That's definitely true. We would also, I think, need to look at that in, as a whole, as opposed to just residents' trees, because obviously, the town is also taking down trees.
Certainly. The tree canopy means all the trees in town, yes.
So those, in fact, would not necessarily be coming down as a result of construction. The trees can come down whether or not there's construction happening.
I'm sorry. One of the things that I think when we sit down to talk next time is trying to figure out whether we want to focus on the building code and things in the building code we would want to change or add, such as stormwater management, which we've talked about off and on for 10 years, after our hopes for the county were first lifted and now not so lifted, or whether we also want to amend the tree section. Because I see those as two different parts of the code. And I think that the Parks and Natural Resources Committee has worked on maintaining tree canopy, maybe not in quite as big a study fashion as you all are talking about, but it's something they talk about all the time.
No, I'm sorry, Barney. I apologize.
It's hard with this to know. I mean, I think that if you look at the kinds of things, proposals they've put forward over the years, that's been their paramount concern.
And they've had some difficulty, I might add, with homeowners. And I'm not one to say I know anything about this, but with homeowners who refuse to put canopy trees on their lawns because they want solar panels. So there's so much to look at out there. And I'm not quite sure how we go about it, but I'm totally with Franny and with Barney that we really need to decide what we want to do. What is our purpose as a council? What policy changes, if any, do we want to make? Are we interested in making changes to the building code? And I guess I'm wondering if Ron can tell us, with all of his experience, where's the best place to start? Do we first decide, there's so much. Do we decide first, do we want to make changes to the building code? Or do we decide, we just want to study all of these things? Or should we decide if we want to bring in an outside contractor to help us? Just where should we begin? Do you have any, can you help us with that at all, Ron?
Sure. So I will say that Somerset is in a situation that's a bit different than the other towns. The town of Chevy Chase went to the legislature for additional approval to regulate buildings because, you know, the town recognized there was a problem and then sought the authority to deal with it. And once the authority was granted, the town then commenced its review process. So in that instance, the town council of the town of Chevy Chase, there was among them a general consensus that something had to be done. And so that framed the study that followed. And that was true for Chevy Chase Village and Martin's Editions as well. So generally speaking, I find that the process works best if there's some initial policy discussion among the council that helps frame the additional study that follows. One risk is if you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bar.
I mean, that's what I was trying to do, actually, when I started. And, you know, I think for the council, it is the job to set up what are the major problems that we're seeing for the town. And we may want to collect data on that, too. That's all right. And then when we've done that, we then give it to a committee to give us solutions to those problems. What are the kind of ways we can approach those problems and make things better for the town? So that's the flow, I hope.
Sounds like that's a good, since we're closing in on the end of this work session, it sounds like that's a good charge for us for the middle of the month.
Can I just ask that we consider, before we get too far down the road of setting up one committee for this, I'd like to, you know, just keep open the idea that we look at these as different topics. Because I think it would help in a sense if we could frame the tree policy as a standalone concept as opposed to sort of, what I worry about is that if we put this all together, that this is essentially sort of an anti-mansionization, you know, committee and, but using trees and stormwaters as sort of a, you know, top-line discussion, sort of a label. And yet, you know, what worries me here is that I think what we're actually talking about are changes to the building code, which to me is anti-mansionization. If that's what we want to do, then let's be upfront about it and candid. And I don't want the ball to be hidden here.
I think there's a lot more to say about this. And we have two minutes, so we probably shouldn't be saying much more.
Maybe when we get to the mayor's report, we can pick a date for a conversation where we can have several hours. And at the end of that time, I would hope we would have come to some conclusion. I think this was a very fruitful discussion tonight to help us think about what we want to bring to the table in two weeks.
Thank you. Yes, that sounds great. Looking forward to the following meeting.
Does everybody feel like they've got all the material we've talked about? There was a lot in the folder for tonight and some of it's been circulated by Steve and me individually, too. and me individually, too.
It's hard to know if we have it all, because that's the, almost the problem. You don't know. How would one, how would one know?
I'll do a list of what I think we should all have.
Marnie, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. I really feel like people worked hard and had a good conversation.
Thank you, Marnie.
Jeffrey, we're back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. I am now calling the regular meeting of the Somerset Town Council to order. Before we get to the agenda, as you reminded to residents and participants, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town website. There will be a public comment period at the outset of the meeting. Additionally, we will allow for comments after the council has had a chance to discuss the agenda items labeled "public hearing" on the agenda that was distributed by the town and posted on the town website. We ask that audience members please hold questions until you've been called on and to use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak. Before you make your comments, please state your name and the street that you live on for records-keeping purposes. We will limit the resident comment period to 30 minutes total and ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes per person. If this meeting gets interrupted, we will immediately end the call and send instructions on a new meeting via email. We will now start the meeting. And we will start with the public comment period. So, Mr. Town Manager, has anyone raised their hand or indicated they wish to make a comment?
Not as of this moment. So I think, I think not.
Okay, well, thank you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I spoke too soon. We do have a comment. I'm sorry. Julie Greenberg just raised her hand. So Julie, I'm going to lower your hand and unmute you.
So this is Julie Greenberg, Ballstone Avenue. And I look forward to hearing more of the council discussion of the, we discussed in the working session. I, I don't, I guess I don't share the council president's assessment that this moved the ball forward. And perhaps this is a necessary shaking out period to get, you know, the thoughts in order. What I saw is a tension, a tension between the town council doing research, for which it is very ill-equipped to do, given the press of other business, and wanting to define a mission for other people to do research. There was a very clear assignment to Ron Bolt to do something. It's something that this study committee could also do. In fact, it would be something that this study committee could do, and it could do it as part of its mission. So my feeling is that there's, you know, I hope that in two weeks, when there's a discussion of this, that what the town council does is to turn over its, you know, its request for examination, the data it wants, the scope of examination it wants, for the issues that it wants brought to it to make decisions. And not for a, you know, this global, like, what is the problem? We had a town election just recently, and I think that one of the issues that was part of discussion, it was a very central part of discussion, was this study committee. And all three candidates professed support. I don't think this is something that's in question. I don't think that there's any question about, the majority of voters want this to be examined, and they want the issues of stormwater and the tree canopy. This is not a backdoor to an attack on mansionization. And to portray it that way is to undermine, I think, what the public opinion was. It doesn't respect the community. So my hope is that you actually think, what is it that you can make decisions on? And how can you turn that over to a body that can spend hours and hours and hours doing work for you, rather than spend hours and hours and hours debating, which is what I fear is going to happen moving forward. I'll look forward to the next meeting in two weeks. And I hope that it is focused on developing a request, developing a discharge of, this is what we want, bring it to us, so we can digest it and make decisions on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further, Mr. Town Manager, did anybody else raise their hand? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. We will now move to the council president election. As everyone knows, at this time of year, the council has the opportunity to elect its president for the coming term. So I would like to open up the nominations.
I nominate Marnie Shaw.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes, I just would like to say something, if I could, about, with the nomination, if I might.
Thank you. Hold on. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any further nominations? Okay, hearing none. Councilmember Zoig has her.
I actually had hoped to be able to nominate Marnie Shaw as council president. Having served with Marnie for over 10 years, I am most thankful for all of her hard work as a council member, vice president, and council president. Marnie devotes an incredible amount of time and energy to the town, and each and every year puts in an endless amount of thoughtful work into our town. We are most fortunate to have such a talented, respected, and respectful resident who is willing to serve. And with that, I'd like to second Steve's nomination.
Well said. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't need to cut you off.
Well, then I think we had two seconds. Okay, is there further, are there further comments on the nomination? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very much. Congratulations, Council President Shaw. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Jeffrey, could I just say a couple words?
Sure.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues. I really appreciate their support. And one thing I want to work with you all on in the next couple of weeks are the council liaison assignments. And so let's be in touch about what you think you'd like to be doing. So, because we're going to need a, the more committees that Jeffrey is creating, we're going to need a core from the council members to actually be able to have enough liaisons.
Will we be getting that list soon so that we'll know what committees there actually will be this next year?
I thought I sent something around. If I didn't, I will send something around.
Thank you.
That's it, Jeffrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we have consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
There's discussion, hearing none.
Yeah. If the consent agenda includes the draft minutes, I do have a point to raise on the draft minutes.
Oh, okay.
All right. Which is that we had it as the June meeting.
In the future, just so you know, that when the consent agenda is called, you can take something off the consent agenda, and I'll make it clear again next time. But anyway, go forward.
Okay, all right. The draft minutes from our June meeting do not include the brief discussion of the introduction of the consideration of opting into the Montgomery County pesticide regulation, which happened at the end of the meeting. And I recommend that that be added to the draft minutes.
Okay, does, Mr. Town Manager, do you have, would you have the language for that?
I guess I would like some clarification on that.
You know what we can do? Let's, let's, I would suggest that we, that you pull out the approval of the minutes for the June 1st meeting, and then that could be considered next month after there's been consultation with Councilmember Barr. Is that, is that, okay, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, so, so, but there's been a motion to approve, I think, at this point, the, I think from a parliamentary procedure, shouldn't the council oppose this motion and then somebody can amend and make a new amended motion? So let me recommend that everybody votes no on the motion on the floor. So can you please vote no, can everyone vote no on the motion?
No.
Okay. Okay, unanimous vote. Okay, now, Madam Council President, can you please make a motion regarding the consent agenda? You need to unmute yourself.
I move to remove the approval of the minutes from the regular town council meeting held on June 1st from the consent agenda.
And, and to approve?
Second.
And to approve the item three, which is the transfer of funds.
Thank you. Excellent. And I think Councilmember Zoig has her seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everybody. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of bid proposal by Precision Concrete Cutting for expenditures to address sidewalk tripping hazard at a cost of $24,265. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes. Let's see. So I just had Jim Grimes from Precision Concrete, I'm not sure if he had connection issues here, but I will introduce the proposal and hope that he hops back on. Essentially, Linda and I met with Precision Concrete Cutting, who's done some work previously in Somerset to grind down hazardous tripping areas in the town sidewalks. And we had our maintenance staff mark out areas in town that were especially hazardous. And so we asked them to look at the town's sidewalks and give us two concurrent bids. One is a bid to just fix the most hazardous tripping hazards in town. And then the other is to do a more comprehensive bid for all of the tripping hazards in town that, I think I've explained in the document for you how they break it out. So anything above a half inch Precision Concrete recommends doing work on. Whereas the work that, that we had marked out was for, they were all three quarters of an inch or higher. So there's two bids. One is for just under $2,800. And then another, the more comprehensive bid, is a little over $24,000. And so I was recommending that we just go ahead and go with the more comprehensive bid at this time. One item in the budget that is pretty consistently over-budgeted, granted, in case we do get a crazy snowstorm, is for sidewalk snow removal. So my recommendation was at this time to make the transfer from that one line item into this, to pay for the more comprehensive of the two bids, and to reassess sidewalk snow removal costs at a later time. So I do believe that Jim did just jump on. So, let's see, Jim, I have Jim's iPhone and...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I was having a little trouble in the beginning. I'm good now, I think.
Please identify yourself for the tape, please.
Surely. Yeah, my pleasure. My name's Jim Grimes with Precision Concrete Cutting.
Okay, did you, did you want to add anything to the Town Manager's report on the project?
I don't know how much of that you caught, Jim, but I sort of introduced the two proposals. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add or any background on how you came to those that might be helpful for the council.
Honestly, Matt, I didn't hear, I kind of caught the tail end of it.
Okay. Well, then maybe, maybe at this point, if the council just has any questions, Jim could...
Let's just get a questions. Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No, but I do want to state that we have had residents who are concerned about tripping hazards, and I actually am one of them, because I walk a lot on the town sidewalks. And I do think we need to correct this problem to the extent that we can.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoig has her.
No, I was actually impressed by the work that's been done by Precision, and I've seen all the markings around town, and I would be delighted to have all the tripping hazards fixed.
That's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo?
No questions about this, but the related matter, I just wanted to highlight for the attention of the council. I've had one town resident communicate with me regularly about issues of vegetation on private property, you know, just approaching into the sidewalk area, obstructing vision and making it difficult to actually safely walk. So I think in addition to dealing with the sidewalks themselves, we may need to take a look at broader issues. And I've been working with Matt, our town manager, on this. It was highlighted in his latest email announcement. I just wanted to mention it to everyone.
We're working on that, as you know, and it's a never, it's a never-ending story. But thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
I have no questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
There are no, no hands raised, no indications.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion? Council, Madam President?
Look, that we approved the bid proposal by Precision Concrete Cutting for expenditures to address sidewalk tripping hazards at a cost of $24,265.
I'll second that.
We're transferring the money from our sidewalk snow removal line item.
Thank you. And I note, there's been a second, thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next. Next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of reimbursement in the amount of $200 for banners purchased by parents of graduating Somerset residents for graduation ceremony at town hall. So the reason this is on the agenda, there's two reasons this is on the agenda. The first one is that it does involve an expenditure, an additional expenditure from the decision that was made last month. But the second reason, the second reason that it's on there, that I wanted it on there was because I wanted the council to recall that we do have a gift policy. And this, these banners are essentially a gift, because part of the proposal was that the town would reimburse them for the banners, and then the banners would become property of the town. Now, I, we don't have a gift policy that relates to banners, so that's number one. The second issue is that one of the lovely ideas that came up from these graduations, which, as you recall, were private, they were private graduation. It was, it was a private event. It was approved by the council. But there, a number of residents have requested that this become a town public event for next year. And the only reason to buy the, for us to even have the banners would be for the, for a future town public event. So I wanted the council to understand that if they, that they would be approving the expenditure of the funds... the expenditure of the funds plus approving the gift and sort of by inference approving the fact that these would be used next year for, for, for another event, which would be a public event, which would be, have to be approved by the council. So anyway, that, that's why it's on there. So Council President, Council, Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, and I'm, I'm not sure if any of the, um, the parents are on and wish to say anything. Uh, I think that their, I think that their request is pretty self-explanatory. So with that, with that, Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zieg has her.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peel?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Serco?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, there is, did anyone raise their hand? Okay, thank you. Council, do you, are you prepared to make a motion? Madam President?
I'm, I move that we approve the reimbursement in the amount of $200 for banners purchased by parents of graduating Somerset residents for graduation ceremony at the town hall and to accept them as a gift. The banners as a gift.
Second.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. I think it was Councilwoman Peel that seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. Next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of HVAC unit replacement at 4603 Dorset Avenue. Council, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, pretty straightforward. This was an emergency HVAC replacement. Um, I included the emails from, um, from Wayne C. Fowler and the, the replacement HVACs passed the town's noise ordinance. And so, uh, council just needs to retroactively approve the permit at this point.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Zieg has her.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel?
I do want to just mention that I'd like to remind the council that we have talked about putting this on our list of things to look at. I don't have any questions about this application itself.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Serco?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Barr?
Yeah, I agree with Franny. I mean, their new air conditioners actually are routinely now quieter than the ones they replace. So whether we actually have to go through this process when somebody replaces their conditioner should be questioned. No questions on this issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, did anyone raise their hand?
Marnie, Marnie Shaw.
I, I just wanted to say, Robin, we have had instances where people replaced air conditioners and because of their location, they did not pass the noise test.
We should look at the issue. I mean, we, we can rewrite the regulation about moving an air conditioner versus replacing an air conditioner.
They don't pass the noise test and we don't approve them. That's why, anyway, we don't, that's why we should talk about it, but we don't have to debate it.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't think there were any comments or questions from our residents or guests. So, uh, council, are you prepared to make a motion? Madam President?
I recommend that we approve the HVAC unit replacement at 4603 Dorset Avenue.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is the building administrator's report. Mr. Lowmeyer?
Go ahead, Doug.
Uh, good evening. You'll notice there's a new, uh, document in your packet this month. Matt and I thought a monthly status report of what's happening in the town would be more helpful to the council than the spreadsheet that you've been receiving. Uh, so I'll be preparing this every month and at the monthly meetings, I'll go over some of the items, not all of them, and then answer any questions you might have. So the first item is 4721. Uh, they've applied for a building permit for the deck at the rear of the house. The permit was issued on April 7th and the work is progressing. Uh, deal is still going on. Uh, at 4602 Dorset, a building permit was issued for the addition at the existing house that was last August. So we'll be checking to see if that work could be completed within the year. I'll be contacting the homeowners. At 4709 Dorset, a building permit was closed and the homeowner has recently received a permit to install a fence in the front yard. That work is taking place. 4816 Dorset Avenue, uh, the building permit for detached garage at the rear of the house was issued on June 16th and the work is proceeding. At 4823 Dorset Avenue, the county has closed their building permit and, uh, the detached, uh, building in the back does comply with the town code. So I've requested that Matt, uh, release the permit and return the applicant's performance bond. At 4710 Essex, uh, the building permit had been released, but we had an issue with the existing new fence being too high. Uh, they have reduced the fence. I've been out to the site, measured the new fence and it does comply with the code. So that will be closed out. At 5813 Surrey Street, uh, they did receive a fence permit in April. Uh, we've noticed that the fence along the Surrey side of the property, that's at the corner of Surrey and Cumberland, is taller than the maximum 42 inches. And I believe Matt's been talking to the homeowner about that fence. At 5516 Stretches Street, uh, we've been working with the architect and I was told this week that they'll be getting the county permits. So they'll be submitting something to the town, hopefully for the August meeting. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? You need to unmute.
I think she's muted.
You need to unmute, yeah. Can you mute everybody, Matt, and then just unmute them? Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have questions?
Uh, yes, on 5800 Deal, um, when you say the building permit was extended for six months on April 6th, last time we had this discussion, it wasn't clear what the date the extension was actually from. So I don't think we, my, last time you, you said we couldn't just add six months to say, um, April 6th. So I, I don't really know how, how long this permit goes for.
Uh, I believe the procedure has been in the past that when the council approves a building permit, the building permit effective date is the date that actual permit was issued, not the council hearing. But when a permit has been extended by the council, we've been going by the council hearing date.
It's six months from April 6th, no matter what date the last permit was extended to?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I'm sorry, on, on 5508 Uppingham, you said that the height survey's been requested?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zieg has her.
Yeah, just a question about the height survey. So do we request that? Is that how that works?
That was, uh, typically if the building permit application shows the proposed height to be near the maximum height allowed in county and the town, I will recommend that a height survey be required and you all have been making that a part of the building condition. So yes, it's something we require.
Okay, because it looks like, then does the, this is just a question. Has the, does the work stop at that point, Doug? Or is that just a coincidence that there hasn't been anything going on there? At least as far as I've seen.
Uh, no, that shouldn't impact the schedule. I don't know why they haven't been working on it the last couple of days.
Okay. Okay. And I also want to, on a, uh, on a happier note, I want to mention that the deal place seems, because I walk by there often these days and that seems to be moving along significantly. And that's it, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Serco?
Yes, please. I'm, I'm, I'm prompted to ask some questions based on the construction effort of 4917 Essex, but, but these are really slightly more generic questions. The wall check survey and the roof height. Are those just based on the, um, construction in progress? Or is, or are they then based on the final construction? So for example, the, the wall for 4917 cannot be, I mean, the setback is eight feet from the property line. So if the concrete foundation is at eight feet, well then if they start to build the, the wall and, uh, I mean, the, 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 they finish the wall, it's going to be closer than eight feet. So I guess the question is, what, what is the measurement supposed to be to?
We follow the county's policy and the county requires on all new construction, they provide a wall check when the basement walls have been installed prior to any, uh, addition on the outside. So that's supposed to be taken into consideration, but it has to be done as soon as the walls go in before the county will allow them to proceed.
Okay, but, but if, okay, but, but if the wall is at eight feet and then they finish it and then the wall ends up being at like seven feet, 10 inches, that would seem like a violation of the setback. Is, would that be a violation of the setback or is that not?
We check it, but, uh, we're following the county's policy. We don't, there's nothing really in our code requiring a wall check. We just follow the counties.
Um, I understand, I'm asking about the setback, though. What is the setback supposed to be in reference to?
The face of the wall.
The face of the wall, okay. So.
Yes.
So we might not really know that answer until the wall is finally constructed. The same as, as the roof. I would think that the thickness of the tiles they put on the top of the roof, I mean, we're, we're talking about a house where the mean roof height is 29.95 feet and maximum height allowed is 30.0 feet. So we're talking about a difference of .05 feet, which is not very much. I mean, I, okay. Sorry, Doug, that, that's enough for now. I'll follow up with you offline later. Thank you.
The Councilwoman Serco, we have time. We're ahead. Actually, if you have any other questions?
I, I think that that's it for now. I, I think I just need to follow up maybe with the town manager to understand, better understand how or when we do some of these checks. And if there is a question about a potential violation after the final construction, after these in-process measurements are made, what is the process to address them?
Okay, okay, good. Yeah, they'll be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Barr, do you have, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, no.
Councilmember Zieg has, you have a question?
Do. Um, actually, I really, Marnie has such a wonderful memory for things like this. Marnie, do you recall the house on Dorset where the height, they failed the height check? This might help Steve. That's why I'm, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up. And they actually had to redo the roof, Steve. So, so the process does, I just want you to have some confidence that the.
Thank you.
The process, the process works. And then there was another house on, um, on Uppingham, again on Marnie Street, where they had poured the foundation and, or whatever it is. I don't know if they poured the foundation, but they had in those blocks. And that also was wrong. And, um, they had, the, it was noted and, and they had to redo it. So, so there is a process in place that, believe it or not, it actually works and people do change things. That, Marnie, am I remembering all that correctly?
Well, with the one on Uppingham Street, um, neighbors actually noticed as well and they, they tore out the entire foundation because they wanted a continuous pour and so they didn't want to just take out that one back wall. But, um, this is something maybe Ron can help out with or Doug. We follow the county. I mean, we do not have, uh, many regulations ourselves. We have setbacks, but, uh, a lot of this is in the county code and we haven't adopted, unlike the town of Chevy Chase, we haven't adopted, uh, different things from the county.
Doug, you want to respond to that? Yeah, Doug, go ahead. I think Doug is muted.
No, I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you want to respond to?
We do follow the county's policy on wall checks. Now, we do, since I've been working with the town, we have not had a roof that exceeded the limit. But in Martin's addition, we had one and we forced them to lower the roof by six inches because it exceeded the roof. So we, we have the ability to enforce the roof. And I'll check with the county and see what their policy is on wall checks because it's their requirement that we follow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, Doug? Okay, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of the removal of the following town trees as recommended by the town arborist. Capella Park, a 16-inch American elm, 90% dead. Capella Park, an 18-inch American elm, 90% dead. 4604 Dorset Avenue, a 15-inch mulberry, hazardous leaning on fence. 5526 Warwick Place, 30-inch pin oak in decline with large dead wood and will not revive. Mr. Town Arborist, Dr. Feather?
Hi, uh, good evening. And, uh, the two elms are, are pretty much, they, I think they have Dutch elm disease. They went down there on, on, along Wisconsin. The one on Dorset is behind a house in the woods and it's leaning over the yard and, um, getting, kind of getting too heavy for the lean. And the one on Warwick is a pin oak that, um, just is, it has a lot of dead wood in it and it's, it's, might as well be taken down. It's not really going to revive and, uh, you'll spend more time taking wood out of it than you will just taking it down now.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Questions, but I'm glad that Dr. Feather clarified where these were because the picture said they were on Dorset and Connecticut.
Yeah, they're, well, they're, they're at the corner. They're along Wisconsin.
Right.
Or I'm sorry, Connecticut, I'm sorry.
You saw where the town, yeah, you saw where.
Wrong jurisdiction.
Thank you. Councilmember Zieg has her.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Peel?
No questions.
Councilmember Serco?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barr?
What's the plan to replace the elm trees in Capella Park? It presumably not, not, not more elm trees?
No, we've been doing, uh, sugar maple and swamp white oak, for those.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there, did any resident or guest raise their hand?
No.
Okay, thank you. Are you?
Marnie, Marnie has a question.
Well, not about these, but before, before, after we vote, don't go away, Dr. Feather, because I have a question about trees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, council, you're prepared to make a motion? Madam President or whoever?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I move that we remove the trees as, as noted on the town agenda for the July meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Council President Shaw, you have a question?
For Dr. Feather, last month, we talked about the two trees on Fallstone on the opposite sides of Trent Court. And you said you were going to leave them in for a little while longer and see how they were going to do. And they actually perked up for a little bit.
Yeah.
But, but now they're not looking so good again.
Oh, I haven't seen them since last week, so I'll take another look.
I, I'm not sure that they've gotten water in their, the base things that, you know, those, those alligator things. you know, those alligator things at the bottom.
Yeah, staff has been doing that. He did that religiously when they went down. So I'll take a look at them tomorrow.
Thank you very much, because they're looking a little poorly.
Okay, because they did look pretty good a week or two ago.
They did. They improved.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Madam President, I note that we are running ahead. So do you want to use this opportunity during the next five minutes to schedule your work session?
Yes. So if we could look at mid-month, which would be the week of the 20th, just sort of starting with Monday, the 20th, are people available on the 20th?
What time of day are you thinking about, Marnie?
It could be, it could be afternoon or evening, whatever works for everybody. I guess I was thinking evening, because Steve works during the day.
I'm available that day.
Yep, I'm available at 7:00.
I may not be available. I could, I'll probably know tomorrow, but I may not be available on the 20th.
What about the 21st?
And the 21st, I am on my calendar that there's a PNRC meeting. I don't know if that's right or not.
That could be. I don't know. I don't have it. How about the 22nd?
I'm good on the 22nd.
I can do that.
I can do that.
So did I hear anybody say they could not? So let's plan on the 22nd. Does 7:00 work?
Yeah, I'm not available, but I don't have to be at the meeting.
7:00 works for me, yes.
I
So we'll put down 7:00 on the 22nd. I think we should plan on two hours. I would really like to see if we can work our way totally through this issue and be prepared, just put something on the August agenda.
Is there any?
Marnie, are you going to ask for Matt or Ron to be part of that?
Definitely. Ron, if he's available. Ron, are you still there? Where are you? Oh, there you are.
I'm still here.
Yeah. Does that work for you?
It does.
And Matt, could you? Okay.
Is there any interest in, since it's a two-hour meeting and starting it a bit earlier?
I can start.
Seven. What are you all, what's your all's preference? I can do
I can start at 6:00.
I can do earlier.
Want to say 6:00?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, 6 to 8. I'll just eat late. All right.
Or eat during the meeting.
I could do that, too.
Right. Okay, Marnie, are we okay, are you okay with that, if we eat?
Yes. And what I will do in the next day or so is put together a list of all the documents people should have available to take a look at. And I think if people have questions that they think would be useful for others to think about, I think we can circulate without any comment information.
Can I also ask, since we have a little time, I don't know whether Matt would have time for this, but I would very much appreciate hearing, by way of Matt, you know, maybe any issues that Talbert or Doug might flag based on their experience working in the town in terms of areas that they think we could improve on. Because, you know, again, I think we meet once a month. You know, they're dealing with issues related to our town code, you know, on a regular basis. And I think it would be important to get some feedback from them about how things work in the field, as they say. If Matt has time for that.
Yeah, I can, I'll talk to both of them and be prepared to talk about any discussion, any recommendations that they might have, or even food for thought that they might have, even if they're not recommendations.
Thank you.
Circulate things ahead of time. I think it helps for people to be able to read through things without commenting on them.
Sure. Sure, I'll, let's see, so when's, so I, is, let's see, so if I, if I can get you something by, you know, the end of next week, the end of next week, get the latest, you know, something like that?
I think if it's not long, if we have a couple of days ahead of time, that's probably fine.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Right. We are now, we are now back on schedule. The next item, public hearing motion to consider town adoption of Montgomery County's Healthy Lawns Act, Bill 5214, restricting the use of certain pesticides on private lawns, playgrounds, mulch, recreation areas, and childcare facilities, as proposed by Councilmember Circo. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Circo.
Thank you very much, Jeffrey. So I'm really excited about this. We've worked on it for a while. We've reviewed it in several town forums. I believe all the information has been provided to council members for consideration. And, I mean, the gist of it is that the town, I'm recommending that the town opt into Montgomery County's first-in-the-nation pesticide law known as the Healthy Lawns Act, to provide protection for the health and safety of our residents and the environment here in Somerset.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Attorney, do you wish to add anything about? There are a number of questions that councilmembers asked you in advance. Would you like to comment the introduction, on the pending amendment for consideration?
No, Mr. Mayor, but we can, if you wish, style it as a motion to adopt the ordinance. And there is a draft ordinance in the meeting package. The date of introduction just needs to be amended. The date of introduction in the draft will reflect June 1st, and then the adoption date would be revised to state today, July 6th.
Yeah, the thing
Mr. Barr, Councilor, you have a chance. Is that, does that complete your analysis, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have questions?
No, I just want to say that I think that it was really good that we were able to hold meetings by Zoom where so many people could listen in. And here are several different panels, because I think it's an important topic, and a lot of questions got answered by having a variety of people make presentations. So thank you for organizing that, Steve.
Thank you. Councilmember Ziegheiser.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Appeal.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo, oh no, I'm sorry. Councilmember Barr.
Yeah. Right. I mean, I don't think another issue has had quite so much participation from a residence as this one had. It's been quite remarkable. The one thing about the ordinance that I do want to bring up is that it shows as taking effect 36 days after the mayor approves it. And in fact, the intent in passing this ordinance is for it not to be effective until the end of the season, which would be November or December 1. So we should write that into the ordinance, that it should be not earlier than December 1st that we started.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, Council, when it, Mr. Town Attorney, so when it's moved, he can amend it, right?
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
So, so thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Barr. Did you have any other questions, Councilmember Barr? Okay. Mr. Town Manager, are there any of our residents or guests who have raised their hand?
No.
Okay, thank you. With that, Councilmember Circo, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, let me get this right. So I move that the town adopt Montgomery County's Healthy Lawns Act, Bill 52-14, restricting the use of certain pesticides on private lawns, playgrounds, mulch, recreation areas, and children's facilities as effective December 1st, 2020, and with corrections to the draft document prepared by our town council to reflect that this was introduced at the June meeting.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient as a motion?
Yes, and so, just to repeat, the effective date, December 1, 2020.
December 1. That's consistent with other jurisdictions in the area as they've adopted it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barr, is there discussion?
I have a question. I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand what we're doing from the legal perspective. Are we, I mean, this is a question for Ron, I think, because Steve's motion said to adopt. And then earlier in our conversation, we talked about opting into. And I just wanted to understand if there was any difference between those two things and, in fact, what we're trying to do.
Yeah, so legally, there is a difference. But what the proposed ordinance reflects is that County Chapter 33B would be made applicable in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Enforced by the county. The town would not be enforcing it as its own regulation.
Right. I think that's an important distinction, because enforcement was something that we talked about quite a bit in our town forum.
Right, thank you. Thanks for that clarification, Chris.
Okay, is there further?
I don't have any other, I don't have any other questions.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, thank you. I think that was unanimous. Okay, again, we are running ahead of schedule, so I'm going to move to Item 11, Public Hearing Motion to Consider Approval of Gift of Doggie Pod Dog Waste Receptacle and Bag Dispenser to Town of Somerset by me to be placed at the town pool parking lot and walking path. And I would just like to give you a history of this. And this is, there was a need for this particular dog waste receptacle identified by your council president at one of our bi-monthly meetings with the town manager. And so even though there is no money in the budget for this year, I decided to again set an example of how you can give a meaningful gift to the town to do this in accordance with the town's gift policy. And I don't know if the council president would like to discuss the history of the need for the dog waste receptacle at that site.
Thank you, Jeffrey, and thank you for your generous offer. I think during this time period where people have been home a lot, we've had a lot of people, not just from Somerset, but elsewhere, coming through town and in the nice parking lot area and parallel to the pool, that parking lot, right along the edge there, one would often, or I would often see piles of dog food. And I thought, well, if we had a container, it might encourage people to pick up after their dogs. So I mentioned the problem at one of our bi-monthly management meetings. And Jeffrey said, you know, I could do a gift here. But then we had to go through the whole process of making sure we could get it on the agenda. And we had an approved container, and so on and so forth. So even though we talked about this a couple of months ago, it's just coming to fruition tonight. But I think it would be a very nice addition down at the pool site.
And also, I want to thank you, Madam President. One of the reasons why Council President Shaw wanted to have this discussion was so that for the newer members of the council who weren't around when Councilor Appeal spearheaded this gift policy, one of the reasons we have it is because we, there was a whole, I don't want to say discussion, but there was a lot of questions raised over the years, like what really is a gift? And a meaningful gift is something that we need, not something that is just kind of like dumped on us that then creates lifetime problems, such as the batting cage and the piano, which I was part of the gift of, and the bench at the entrance at Wisconsin Endorsement. And so I think that, you know, I want to set an example, and I would like to encourage other residents who, because a lot of times, there are a lot of situations where people want to give gifts, but, you know, what is a gift? And we know that this is a gift that the town wants, because it's part of the policy. And it's also, not only is it a gift of the dog waste receptacle, it's also a specific one that has been approved. So it's not a gift receptacle that isn't part of the already existing program. And I also want to remind everyone, too, that there was also the discussion of the, there was a bench, remember, and I think it was in Capella Park? And, wasn't that a gift, Marnie? Or somebody wanted to give it. But anyway, I just think it's important that we, that the town council approves gifts that are part of the ongoing policy and procedures, and not
If I could just add, a lot of time was spent, I think particularly by Barbara and Franny, on looking at benches, for example, because we wanted to have sort of a uniform set of benches so that we didn't have people coming in and saying, well, I like this one or that one. And there was some real time spent trying to determine what would be the kind of bench that the town would like to get as a gift.
And I think the gift of the bench that I was involved in decade, over a decade ago, at the entrance of Somerset is not really, I don't think that's the kind of bench that's part of the policy now, so. Anyway, thank you, everybody. Councilmember Ziegheiser, do you have any questions?
So, in reference to all that, Matt and I emailed today, and I asked if we could select a different container than the one that was in your packet so that we could have some uniformity in town. And I think, Matt, you were able to find that, and it'll be, I'm hoping that this container will be the same as the other container that was donated.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. The picture that I had sent around was a rectangular box instead of the cylindrical one. But it's, so I actually included in the link you have to your packets, if you log in now, an updated one with the correct, the correct item number to order it. So I did find it, and thank you for pointing that out.
That's good, good legislating, because we didn't want to buy the wrong one. And that's why it's important that all gifts come before the council.
Right, and I was hoping that there should be a file, Lynda, that would tell you exactly where the plaque is from, and so that we could get the same one, not go to a different company, just, we've had many of those, we've used many of those plaques in town. So there should be a file that would tell you what vendor we used and the best way to order it, so that we could put a plaque on this container as well, that it was donated by the mayor.
I think it's an attachment to our policy.
Hold on, hold on. Councilmember Ziegheiser, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Peel, your turn.
All I was going to say is I think what Barbara's remembering is something that we attached as our, attached to our policy. So it may be actually attached, the information about the plaques.
Great. Thanks, Franny.
Okay, Councilwoman Peel, do you have any other questions?
No, no.
And thank you again for creating the policy. Councilmember Circo?
None. Thank you very much for your generosity.
Thank you. Councilman Barr?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any?
No.
Okay, thank you. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
Sure, I move Sure. I move that we approve of the gift of the doggie pot. It's noted, I guess, on the most recent enclosure, Matt, to the agenda that's been donated to the town, except by the Mayor Slavin.
I want to say what, whatever it's called, because I don't think it's the doggie pot, right? It's something else?
It's, it's, it's a, it is made by Doggie Pot.
Why don't we call it the cylinder-style doggie pot? Is that for everyone?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none?
Aye.
Somebody need, Matt, you need to take?
I think, I think it's maybe Franny, you might be getting a little bit of interference on your phone.
I think you should mute everybody just so that there's no extra noise. Okay.
I mean, I'm on a landline. I'm not sure what the problem is.
Matt, can you mute her, though?
If we're not voting on anything else, I could probably go, okay. Does that help, muting me?
There is another vote, so that's better. Okay, thank you. We're still, we're running a little ahead. So let's go to the, briefly to the mayor's report. The one thing that I...
Did you get a mayor's report?
No, I haven't sent the mayor's report. But what I wanted to talk, one of the things I wanted to talk about was the, this month, I would like to schedule a hearing on the first responder, the fire, the fire coverage for the town from, based on requests of some residents and also those involved with the Bethesda Fire Board, that to have a hearing and discussion on how fire protection is coordinated for the town. So I wanted to ask the council some potential times that everyone's available at noon time in July. So if you could give me like two potential dates. So I think you've scheduled something on the 22nd of July. So what about the following week? What about the following week, say Wednesday, the 29th, or Thursday, the 30th at noon? Does that work for everybody?
Friday, the 31st will be a little bit better for me. I could squeeze in the 30th, but the 31st would be better.
Okay, is everybody good on the 31st? Because I think I can get, I don't think it'd be a problem this far in advance. Does that, does that work for everybody? If not, it will be recorded. If you can't be there, it will be recorded.
Okay, because I have a conflict 12 to 1.
Okay, so if those that can't be there, it will be recorded. And of course, if you have questions, you can pose them in advance or you can watch it and we'll get your questions answered afterward. We have, well, let's move to the, this other item. Public hearing.
Since we do have time, could you tell us a little bit more about that meeting? I'm not sure I'm following it, the one you're setting up.
Okay, so the Town of Somerset is covered by, for fire protection, is covered by the Bethesda Fire Board, which we have a board member. It's covered by the BCC Rescue Squad, and it's covered by the Glen Echo Fire Department. And so a number of questions have been raised by residents over the last month about how is this all coordinated? And so we also have a resident, Steve Friedman, who is very active with the BCC. We've met with the commander there in the past. But we've never, we've never gotten to report, or we've never really met in all these years with Glen Echo Fire Department, which they also cover our town. But a lot of questions have been asked about how does that work? And another meeting that we still need to schedule very soon is the meeting with Sean Gagan, who is our Second District Police Commander.
Great. Thank you so much.
So with that, we will...
If I may, I actually got, somebody typed me a comment on this item for you. And it was recommended that we try to get the Fire Department Chief from Montgomery County to also speak, if possible, at the event for us.
Okay, we'll try to do that. Chief Goldstein, I know him, so hopefully we can get him. If not, we could have him at another time. We'll try to do that. Okay, excellent. We will now move to Item 10. Public hearing motion to consider a six-month moratorium on the rental of Town of Somerset public spaces and facilities, including town hall, town hall green space, swimming pool, parkland, and tennis courts. And that also would include the batting cage. Mr. Town Manager, I will turn this over to you to present.
Thank you. So this was recommended at one of our bi-monthly management meetings that essentially, we've been getting some requests from various people to try to use the town hall or town hall spaces. And we haven't formally put in any type of policy in terms of renting them. We've had requests to use the town hall, to use the pool, to use the town hall green space. And it was, it was recommended that a proposal be floated before the council to consider and discuss to essentially align with what we're doing with virtual meetings and put a six-month moratorium on renting the town facilities to outside groups. And at that point, we could possibly reassess it. But it's not, not a fully fleshed-out proposal, but sort of brought to you to then consider. And any thoughts and discussion that you might want to have over that?
It's not only outside groups, there are residents that want to individually rent the town facilities. And what I thought, and the council president agreed, is that rather than disappoint people, rather than have to vet all these proposals through the town attorney and everything, it would just be better to have a moratorium. So the town manager and I would have a response to give, nicely give to people as opposed to saying, well, yes, you can make the request, you can put it before the council. What I've been telling people, it's unlikely the council's going to approve it. But I would rather have a policy standing up behind that rather than wasting all of our time and attorney fees vetting these things. So with that, Council President Shaw, do you have any questions or anything you'd like to add?
I think since we've decided we're not going to use the town hall for our council meetings over this next set of months because I don't think we can guarantee if people want to come to the meeting, we can have social distancing and not even among the council members at the table. I don't think it makes sense to open our facilities up for renting out any of them. I don't think we can ensure that people who use our facilities will practice what currently is a good standard of social distancing or wearing masks and so on. And so I don't really want to see us responsible for groups of people who are elbow-to-elbow without masks over these next set of weeks and months.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zuyghauser?
Yeah, I echo Marnie's comments. And even, I hope our town staff is being diligent about not allowing anyone into the building without a mask. And even when they do come in, being sure that they stay socially distant from you all because there's now seems to be much more evidence that being without a mask in an enclosed space is how the virus is traveling. So I hope you all are, feel that you have the authority to tell people if they do not have a mask and if they're not standing six feet away from you that they need to leave the premises.
Well, that's, that's an excellent observation. Mr. Town Attorney, can the council add to the motion a requirement that visitors wear a mask in the town hall?
Yes.
I would like to, I feel strongly that we should add that so that it's not up to our town manager and assistant to have a head-to-head conversation with someone about a mask.
You can, perhaps she'll be the maker of the motion and we'll add that. So thank you. Do you have any other questions?
I have one other question that just might come your way. And that is about the flu clinic that we typically hold in the fall. Did you all discuss that?
Well...
Because I wouldn't want people to think that that's coming down the pike.
Well, if the, if there's, the way I would see a moratorium is that there will also be no public events.
Great.
You can add that in.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Franny.
Here I am, sorry. I don't think I have any questions about the proposal. I think it's a good idea. But I also would like to support Barbara's amendment. I think having a sign outside makes a huge difference. That's certainly what we're seeing in Vermont, that signs, signs are important, so.
And actually, off of that, not a handwritten sign. I would like...
No, no, yeah, and something on our website and everything.
An official sign, not something homemade.
You can add all that to the, you can add all that to the motion. Thank you. Councilmember Serko?
No further comments. Nice discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
I'd like to point out that, as I think probably we all know, the risk of transmission indoors is many times higher than the risk of transmission outdoors. And we're actually putting the same moratorium on our outdoor space and our indoor space. I feel less strongly about renting out our outdoor space as long as we say you follow CDC guidelines of social distancing and mask-wearing in that area. The indoor space, absolutely, keep people out of.
Okay, thank you.
Did you read, Robin, about the socialite that had a party outdoors?
They didn't follow CDC guidelines.
Are there, Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No comments. I had one thought that when Barbara started to talk about indoors, I might maybe, I don't, and again, I don't know if this requires a specific proposal, but it might be good in the meantime to require appointments for people to come to the town hall for the meantime. I know that some businesses are doing that. And I only say that because the hallway is a little, is a little narrow, and our offices are not really big. So even if we got two or three different people that happened to show up at the same time, you know, they could wait out on the porch, I suppose. But it might, it might just make it easier for people that way.
Matt, I do have a follow-up question based on Robin's point. My understanding of the space outside the town hall is that, you know, there are a couple picnic tables there, and sometimes people are hanging out there and that there's really nothing that we do about that, right? I mean, people do that and nobody gets upset about it?
That's right.
Yeah, so I mean, we're not really kicking people off the lawn. And the whole area between the town hall yard and Wisconsin Avenue is a public park, which we, which is open also. So I think the outdoor space is still available. The question is whether just, whether or not we're going to rent it out to people. So, you know, people are still able to use the throwing cage and the basketball nets and the park area and everything like that.
The issue before you is renting the space. It's not, it's not the use of the space. Okay, are there further comments or questions? Are you, Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll take a crack at it. To consider a six-month moratorium on the rental of, in the Town of Somerset, public spaces and facilities, including the town hall, town hall green space, swimming pool, parkland, and tennis courts, to require all visitors to make an appointment to come to the town hall, to allow for one visitor at a time at the town hall, and that all visitors are required to wear masks. There will be an official sign noting these requirements on the door of the town hall. And there will be no public events hosted at the town hall for the six-month moratorium.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
It is, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council President Shaw, thank you. Is there discussion?
Yes, I have, I would like to ask whether we need to clarify that this restriction does not apply to town employees and consultants because my understanding is that Doug, I don't know, Wayne, that they come in and use the office space in the town hall.
Mr. Town Attorney, can you clarify that? Can you clarify her question, please?
Yeah, I heard somebody else speaking.
It was, her question was whether town employees would be required to wear the mask.
No, no, I'm not talking about the mask. I'm talking about the appointments, the one visitor at a time part.
Yeah, yeah, you could amend the motion to clarify that when visitors is used in the motion, we don't mean the independent contractors doing work for the town.
Right, okay, thank you.
Would you like to make it, propose an amendment, Matt, or Peel?
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion to add language where we clarify that for the purposes of this policy, the term visitors does not include town employees or consultants or members of the town council.
Okay, Council, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
It is, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second to the...
Does that work for Matt and Linda? I just wanted to make sure.
Is there, before we discuss it, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Now, do you have discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. Matt and Linda, does that work for you? Or would you rather have the vendors make appointments as well?
No, that works fine for me. I mean, I was already practicing having people schedule appointments and having them, you know, making sure they wore a mask when they come in anyway. And Wayne came in for the first time today, all masked up, same as Doug, which he's not coming in every day. So that's, that's fine for me.
Yeah, I think it, like Linda said, I think this is more kind of formalizing what we've, we've been doing in practice, more or less. So, thank you.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. Now, is there further discussion on the motion as amended? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. The next item is the town managers' administrative and fiscal reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will run through my list. And there's a couple of things I wanted to just touch briefly on that didn't make it onto my written report. The first pertains to the budget and the financial reports that are included in your packets. This gives us a preliminary look of where we ended fiscal year 2020. But we do tend to get bills kind of through the, through mid-July that still apply to June. And same with revenue from the state, in particular. with revenue from, from the state, in particular the income taxes. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that these are not, these are not necessarily the final numbers, but they give us a pretty good sense of where the final numbers will lie. And so what I'll do is, at the August meeting, in addition to our first, first monthly report for the next fiscal year, I will also include an updated report for FY 2020, so you have, you have a better sense of where we are. And in the next month, I'll be working with the auditors to schedule, schedule our audit for this year, so we can aim to have it completed by the end of this calendar year. I haven't got a good sense of them yet, in part because things have been so fluid of exactly how that's going to go, whether they're going to come down here from Pennsylvania like they normally do or not, and, and what we can do virtually. The good news is that the bill.com system integrates very well, and we upload the bills on there, so that, we haven't been using that the entire, entire year, but we do have a leg up in, in one sense that we can send all of those documents very easily to them. As Linda said, Wayne C. Fowler has, has resumed his duties. He had, he had taken leave of absence. He was concerned about his family and, and spreading the coronavirus, so was not, not meeting, not meeting with, with folks and, and carrying out his duties as, as regularly. An update on the gardening consultant, Kelly O'Clessen, has met with both the PNRC and the Environment Committee. She's met with the town maintenance staff, and they are in the midst of creating a database for our green spaces and developing then a recommended plan for upkeep and proposals for, for plantings and, and other things that we can do in those areas to then work on setting priorities for that and how we might use the money that we have budgeted for it. I also flagged something in terms of, I put this under personnel, but really it applies more to contracts. I, I, I've started to do some, some preliminary look into other municipalities procurement policies, and this is something I've had some discussing, discussing, excuse me, discussions with the mayor on, and, and to a lesser extent, Ron. But that, I think it would be a good thing for the council to consider an official policy for the town, essentially that says for any contract over X amount of dollars, the town is required to competitively bid those contracts. And it's something that we've, we've more or less been doing in practice, but again, I think something to formalize that policy and process and get that on the books would be something good moving forward. An update on the town pool, so I'd updated you as of Tuesday, so they installed the new motor. The electrician came to install the starter and phase converter on Friday, actually. So today, they were, were there marking off spaces for the lifeguards, and let me pull it up, because I, I was able to get an update this afternoon, actually, that the pumps are up and running and have begun filtering. The clues, the, excuse me, the crews had, had begun cleaning over the weekend, and they're actually scheduled for an inspection with the county tomorrow. So they do still have some additional cleaning to do to get the pool finalized and cleared up, but they're still on track for that July 11th opening that we had previously discussed. Let's see, so I, I did get a preliminary website, actually, from Member Splash over the weekend, so I just sent back some feedback to them today, but we should have something up and running in the next, next few days as well on, on that end, because it was mainly actually just taking out things that we, we didn't have. I wanted to let you know that I, I've gotten a proposal for painting and varnishing the pool house. I've only gotten one bid so far, but I, I'm, I want to get that on the August agenda so that we have a couple of proposals to consider and can get that work scheduled for the fall, because I was told by the contractors that, that that's a busy time for them, so the earlier that we can schedule them for that work, the better. And we are at the point, based on the maintenance schedule that was established for the pool house when it was installed, every, every five years, it's recommended that the new paint and varnish be, be added to the pool so that the wood doesn't get attacked by carpenter bees and the woodpeckers and, and all that.
Sorry, just a question there.
Councilor Barr, you have a chance, once he's completed, to go around. Go ahead, Matt.
Um, let's see, so a number of these we've already talked, we've already talked about. I did just want to give an update on street lighting, that the mayor, the council president, council member Barr and I met with some reps from Pepco about LED street lighting in Somerset. And I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I, I do think that the meeting was very positive, and it, it looked, it's, it's looking more and more likely that Somerset is going to be able to get installation of LED, LED streetlights without having to make that initial investment, initial capital investment that, that we had been hoping for. And, and so we'll continue to be in discussions with Pepco. We've expressed to them that we, we definitely want to be at the front of any list as, as they do kind of comprehensive replacements throughout Montgomery and Prince George's Let's see, another item I just wanted to flag really quickly for maybe future council, future council action is the committee, committee charters that we've discussed previously. Ron has drafted a charter for the swim team committee to, to essentially serve as a template for the other town committees. The swim team committee has made some preliminary revisions on that, but needs to meet as, as an entire committee to, to vote, vote on it, to, to vote on their recommendation before the council. And then the only, the only other thing I wanted to mention that's not on there is council member Zoig Hauser had asked about the water quality, because there was a Washington Post article that had indicated that that might be a question in some areas, and I, I had gotten a response from WSSC that our water in Somerset is tested on a weekly basis and has never failed a EPA, EPA test. So our, our water has always and consistently been safe for drinking and, and use, and it's, it's also continually tested.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Before I go take questions, I did want to ask Councilmember Zoig Hauser if she wished that we hold a, sometime in the future, not necessarily in the next month or two, but sometime in the future, we could have a hearing with WSSC regarding some of the questions that you had and maybe that other councilmembers have. The, you, you all might know that Monica Marquina, who used to work for the town of Gavisburg, is now doing government relations, and I'm sure she would be happy to come. So is that something the council would like us to schedule in the future, Councilmember Zoig Hauser?
Maybe in the future. I think we have a pretty, pretty full plate right now. I'm sure.
We have a long list, but maybe before, you know, during the next year, we'll add that to the list.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Perfect, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Remember to unmute.
Are we talking about both the budget and the administrative matters, or?
I believe so, right, Mr. Town Manager?
Sure, that's fine, yep.
Okay, so I'm just, on the budget, I just want to confirm that it looks like, right now, even though you haven't closed out the year, we're probably between $400,000 and $500,000 ahead. Basically, that our revenues were a little more than we anticipated, and we spent significantly less than we had planned. Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, that's right. And, and that's essentially because our income taxes came in higher than anticipated. And then on the, on the expenditure side, there were a couple of, of larger items that we, we just didn't do, including essentially anything related to snow removal, and then the street, the streetlights are, are two, two examples of, you know, things that add up to about, about $200,000 right there.
When you speak with the auditors, will you see if you can get the supplemental schedule for FY 19, and whether they'll do a supplemental schedule for FY 20? The kind of thing that Lindsay and Associates always had in the, in their audits, which I think is a very useful final document.
That, that, basically meaning one that matches up with all the same line items that we put in our budget, as opposed to the.
Because they're very high level, you can't really.
Right.
What they, what's required is a very high level, and it's the one, the audit is the one place where you can find what we actually budgeted and spent, and, and it used to be, you could see it at the level of detail the council is used to reviewing, but our current audit firm only has given us the really high-level numbers, so you can't really tell under the categories what we've spent on different items, which is very useful to know.
Got it.
Okay, so that, that would be good with them. In terms of the administrative report, with the pool, like I said, we're by the pool probably, I don't know, 2:00 or 2:30 this afternoon, and there were a ton of leaves on the bottom of the pool, and nobody was there still from American Pool. They were there when we walked by the first time, marking off the area for the lifeguards, but when we came back, there was nobody there from American Pool, and the bottom of the pool was littered with leaves, so they think the inspector's coming tomorrow?
That's what, that's what they had said to me today, and actually, they, I also got a notice today that Steve Hoffman is no longer gonna, he got reassigned, so he's no longer going to be our point of contact over there, so they've reassigned somebody else new to us named Charles Blair. So maybe that, it might, might be good even to have him at our next council meeting, if, if you'd like, just, because at that point, the, the pool would have been open, just to get a, a report and introduce him to the council quickly. But he said they, they have an inspection scheduled for tomorrow, yes.
Man, I, I don't, I wouldn't pass our pool just walking by it. I mean, not with all that crud in it, but, but maybe they're going to be working all night tonight, I don't know. And you feel confident that by Saturday, the Member Splash website will work? I mean, people are asking about, I have to make a reservation, how am I going to go about doing it?
Yes, yes, and I have been working on what amounts to a, a backup system for us if, if it comes to that, so, so we'll, we have, we have something that, that will be working, but I, yes, I, I do believe the, the Member Splash should be working for us within the next couple of days.
Then my, my last question, because I don't think I have a contract.
We, we, Council President Shaw, we can't hear you.
I'm not muted, so.
The last question I have is.
That's better.
Okay, I just, I got closer to my computer, is around how much we're paying American Pools. I don't have the, the signed contract that I thought you and Ron worked on, some adjustments if we didn't open our pool in the middle of May, which is how the contract, you know, was supposed to run from the middle of May until the end of September, in terms of the pool being open, and it, it looks like we're going to be opening close to two months late. What, what, can you remind me what the adjustment process is for what we owe American Pools under these circumstances?
Yeah, it, it's essentially based on the number of hours that we would have had the pool open, so we, we have a certain number that is refunded to us for the days when it's a half-day, when the school is still open, so that's on both, that's on both ends of the summer, and then a larger number on the full days when school is out of session. And so it works as a reimbursement for those.
Because the bills I'm reviewing right now are for the, like, a seventh of the contractor, however it is, they're not adjusted yet.
Yes, um, yeah, yeah, exactly. And so essentially, we're just paying for, as I said, the, the number, we're, we're still paying for the, the minimal upkeep that is necessary for the pool season, year round, but not for any of the working hours.
Really? I mean, the bills have all been.
Oh, no, it's, but it, the, yes, the, the bills so far have, have come in as the, the regular amount in our contract, and then we're, we are, we get refunds from them on the hours that we, that are not, that are not, that we.
Okay, so I only see the bills, I don't see the refunds.
Exactly, yes, thank you.
Okay, that's fine.
That's a more succinct way of putting it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Zoig Hauser.
Yeah, I've been getting, this is, I guess, related, and hopefully you all can, or one of you can answer the question. As I walk around town, I've been getting questioned about who's going to be allowed in, in the pool, you know, and I guess it's, is the word that we used, what, what was the word that we used? Residents?
Yes.
Yeah, well, because I know with the town election, residents got pretty complicated, So I'm wondering, like, so kids that have lived here for two weeks out of the year are considered residents with, is that correct?
I.
Can someone explain, I guess, can someone explain how it was defined for the election, and then how it'll be defined for the pool, if that's going to be one and the same?
Well, let's let the town attorney explain that, because resident is different for voter registration than it is for the pool, so.
Is it different? Do we have two different, do we have two distinct definitions that are noted in the charter?
Yeah, but children can't register to vote, and so that's a very good question. We'll let the town attorney respond to it. Yeah, I need to.
I, I, I might be able to, I might be able to at least partially answer this, maybe while Ron is, is doing some research into it, but I believe the eligibility for the pool is based on the pool committee's recommendations that are then passed by the council, passed by the council. Your, your point, though, is on, if we say residents, who applies to residents? And I believe that there are, there are certain, there are certain guidelines in the pool rules that state that children under a certain age are allowed in, that live-in nannies are allowed in, et cetera, so, so that there are exceptions like that that are listed in the pool rules.
But what about children, children or grown children who lived in town for a couple of weeks throughout the year, resided in town, or maybe for a month or two, but don't live here every day, are they considered residents? And then if I could just ask my second question, are, are we going to get sort of a, a report from the Board of Elections? Because I know there were many questions that came up with the election about who actually was allowed to vote, and I would really like to hear more about that, is it something that we may want to clarify in this coming years, so that?
Yeah, and, and thank, thank you for flagging that issue, and that's something that I put just very briefly on, on my administrative report, is that I'd recommend it to the, the Board of Supervisors of Elections, and I, perhaps this is common practice, but that they do a, basically a summary, summary review of, of the election with any recommendations for the council in terms of passing any new policies that, that ought to be in place. for the council in terms of passing any new policies that, that ought to be in place.
And did they agree to do that, Matt?
Yes, they're, yes, they're working on that.
That's wonderful, thanks.
Let's let the town attorney answer those questions about residency.
I'm, I'm looking at the, the pool rules now. If you can bear with me.
I, I actually, while you're looking around, I'll, I'll say, I think it's a pretty, I think we've got to get it right, and I think we've got to be consistent, and I think it's, because I, I, I think people will have lots of questions, understandably, about that, in particular, considering the questions that came up during the election.
I, I do think that that is something that also the pool committee should, if there are problems with that, that's, that is something that the pool committee can also be addressing.
Well, but the pool committee chair, I believe, is out of town for the summer, and I really think this is more...
But we're having a pool management meeting on July 14th, so we can bring that question to the, to the meeting.
Yeah, I think, given the, this length of the season, I, I think we really need to work quickly in, in responding to that question.
Can I try to...
Pool rules don't define resident. Matt, do you know off the top of your head, when someone tries to register and, and get their, their key fob, what proof of residency, if any, is required?
I think this is in the code.
Hold on, Councilor Peele, that, I think maybe we should, let Ron do the research and get that to you tomorrow.
That would be wonderful, that would be great, thank you so much.
Do you have any, do you have any further questions?
I do not, thank you.
You, Councilor Peele, do you have questions?
No, but I think both of the answers are, are in the code and charter.
Okay.
To Barbara's questions.
Thank you.
Councilor Circo.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Yeah, this goes back to what I, when I was trying to interrupt, feels like half an hour ago now, the, the issue of carpenter bees and other pests going into the woodwork of the pool house, have there been any more infestations since the original infestation several years ago?
Yeah, yes, there's, there's a number of, especially if, if you're walking up to the pool on, on, on that first side, that wood area, if you look up, you can actually see some, some holes that have woodpeckers gotten to it.
Okay, all right, I mean, do we have to review our maintenance schedule then, perhaps?
I believe we're actually behind on the maintenance schedule, so that could, that could be...
Yeah, all right, okay.
Explaining it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Barr, do you have any further questions? I guess, I guess he doesn't. Okay, thank you. The next item, the last item is the mayor's report, and I, I will, I will be submitting my report later this week, but the one thing that I wanted to point out and bring up is, everyone might have seen on their preliminary agenda that there were two resolutions on the agenda for, one was regarding support of the MML president's statement on racial ju, you know, racial injustice, or whatever it was, and there was another one on Black Lives Matter, and because I didn't, I made my own statements as mayor on both topics, but I placed it on the agenda for, in order for the council to weigh in, but, but I felt that it should only be placed on the agenda if the council wants to place it. I didn't think it was appropriate for me to put it on the agenda, so, so that's why I took it off. So at this point, if the council wants to have it on the agenda for next month, then I will leave it to the council president to poll you and decide whether it wants to be added, that's all, that's the only reason, because, because again, as I've always said, this agenda belongs to the council, it doesn't belong to the mayor. And so I thought this was an example of, that I shouldn't be putting things on the agenda that haven't come up through the, through a process or through a request by a council member, so. So with that, thank you, everyone, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sound moved.
Great. Is there, is there room for comment?
It's not on the agenda.
Who wanted to make a comment?
Josh, Josh Rosenthal.
Well, the meeting, the meeting's over now, so, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, thank you all.
Good night.
Bye.